I call the Cape Charles Town Council regular meeting for March 19th to order. Let's have a vote of call please.
Benin here.
Benin here.
Bennett.
Brian here.
Wendell here.
We have a quorum. Let's rise for a vote of silence. To pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, this evening, first order of business is employee and citizen commendations. This letter is addressed to the town clerk from Chief Jim Pruitt, recommending. This letter is a request to issue commendations to Officer Tom Potts, Sergeant Jay Bell, and Keith Lewis. On the night of March 5th at 19:00, at 7:43 PM, a man fell off the dock and into the frigid water at the Cape Charles harbor. Keith Lewis, a citizen, saw the subject in the water and called 911. He then proceeded out on the dock to attempt to help the subject in the water. Officer Tom Potts arrived on the scene and also aided in the life-saving effort. The rescue effort required both Keith Lewis and Officer Potts to lay on the dock and crawl out to the man due to the ice-covered dock. Officer Potts told me later on the phone that while he was holding the man, trying to keep him above water, that he knew that the man was going to die right there in his arms. Sergeant Jay Bell arrived on the scene and also crawled on his stomach to help. The three men were then able to pull the man out of the water and crawl back up the dock while dragging the victim to a waiting ambulance. The man was transported to a hospital where he made a full recovery. If not for the heroic and selfless effort by all three men, this incident would have had a great outcome. The town of Cape Charles and the Cape Charles Police Department are grateful for the quick thinking of Keith Lewis and both police officers signed Jim Pruitt, Chief of Police. So I would like a motion to award these commendations, please. No, I don't need a motion. Yeah. One day I'll get it right. If you all could step forward, please. Is Keith Lewis here?
Yeah.
All right, we'll save that. So we have Officer Potts. Congratulations, thank you very much. Thanks for your work and your service.
You're welcome.
Officer Bell, thank you very much. We really appreciate all the work that you've brought to us. Oh, okay. We need to do this, we need to paper it out. Sure. My feeling on you, of course. I'm gonna give a second just in case. Got it. Thank you. It's very nice that we can have these little celebrations, that we have people in town who are willing to go the extra mile. Next order of business, I have some announcements. First of all, there is a letter to me, Mayor Proto. I would like to take this time to thank a member of the Cape Charles Police Department for her patience, diligence, and professionalism regarding her investigation of vandalism in and around our neighborhood in Bay Creek. Over the last two years, the cul-de-sac that we live in has been plagued by someone throwing a white material on cars and in the driveway. The Cape Charles Police Department did an excellent job of recording these events, which numbered well over some 18 incidents over this time period and involved all but two of the neighbors. Needless to say, these acts of vandalism were very discomforting and annoying to the people living here. I was impressed with Purple Piper's, then corporal, now sergeant, can-do attitude and the fact that she maintained a positive approach to this situation. I would also like to thank Chief Jim Pruitt for his help and mention that Jim came over here on several occasions using his own personal equipment to help this investigation move forwards. At the time of this writing, the cul-de-sac has not been vandalized in over one month, and this has been a great relief to my neighbors and me. These are what are called quality of life issues, and as we get older, safety and security are paramount. The Cape Charles Police Department should be commended for their vigilance and professional approach to an issue they could easily have set to the side or neglected. Respectfully, Joe Cucaro, Churchill Downs, Bay Creek. So. And I have one other announcement here. It is my pleasure to inform you that Mr. Brent Manuel, currently Assistant Town Manager of the Town of Woodstock, Virginia, has accepted the offer of the position of Town Manager for the Town of Cape Charles. He will begin his term of employment in Cape Charles on Monday, April 6th. Mr. Manuel has a bachelor's degree in urban studies and a planning from VCU, and a public and planning from VCU, and a public management certificate from Shenandoah University. He comes to us with more than 16 years' experience in public administration. A brief press release outlining more details of Mr. Manuel's background and qualifications will appear in the Gazette, in Cape Charles Happenings, and also in The Wave. Mr. Manuel comes to us with a great deal of experience and with a lot of enthusiasm, not only for the position, but for our town itself. The Town Council and I look forward to his beginning his tenure and to the contributions I believe he will make to our town. Mr. Manuel is unable to be here this evening due to the need to wrap up items in his current position, and I'll introduce him formally at a subsequent Town Council meeting. Please give him a great Cape Charles welcome when he begins work. It's been a long time. Council did a great job, good candidates, and I think we got a good one here. So thank you very much. Let's see, next order of business are public comments. Are there any public comments?
Wayne Creve.
It's Wayne Creve, 548 Monroe. Audible mayor, the council just have a couple of quick comments. We have, I know you're working along in the budget, working on beach safety, you know, some signs, and trying to address what happened last summer, so I think it's very important that you want to go with the sign of that. I know you can find the money in there somewhere. And I know it's an outlier event, it doesn't happen, but it does happen, and we don't want it to happen again. So I would urge you to find the money for better signage, more secure signage, but also for maybe finding some teenagers or some, not really lifeguards, but people to walk the beach, give them a whistle, or you know, just like if people are getting close to our kids are getting close, just whistle them back out. It's not, this is not really hard to do. The second thing I want to bring up is the basketball courts. You guys work very hard to take them away, I worked very hard to save them, and the amount of effort I put in to make sure they stayed here, I wanted to put in to make sure we can get them back. I know we got money for that, but we need to find money for that. That sport is very dear to me, it's very dear to many people on the eastern shore and rural communities, it's very important. And the kids really have nowhere to play basketball. My son's birthday is coming up, and I had to go out and buy a basketball bowl for him. He's a craft, and it's very expensive, and he's really got nowhere to put it, it's really in my yard. So he's gonna drive my neighbor completely insane, just trying to work on free throws. But I would urge you, really just to look at the lot across from the school where the skateboard park is, and I would just get rid of the skateboard park, nothing against it, and I'm a skater too, I still skate, but real skaters don't, and parks are for dogs, they're not for skateboard people. So use that, that whole area, you can purchase it wherever you can, we'll start working on getting those courts back, because you know they're very important, especially to a lot of underserved kids here on the shore, and especially to some of the minority children. So I think it's a good investment, I think it'll make the town better and more lively, and it's just a good thing. So I would really thank you.
Congratulations on making sergeant, I wanted to tell you that.
Thank you. Time for public comment is closed. Next would be approval of the agenda format. I have a motion to approve the agenda format. Second. All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Second. All in favor? The minutes from the previous meeting are approved. Next up is the treasurer's report.
Okay, cash first. The total cash on hand at the end of February was $1,628,000. Sorry, $1,628,000. This is a decrease of $240,158 over January. The total restricted or reserved cash was $1,368,520. The total cash on all accounts was $2,996,680. We have two debt service payments due upcoming, they're both in April. One is the VRA 2010 bond principal payment of $120,000, and the other's a police car payment of $4,000. Page two. Budget performance. The general fund shows year-to-date revenue of $2.008 million and year-to-date expenses of $1.32 million for a net balance of $688,000. Public utilities shows year-to-date revenue of $1.124 million and year-to-date expenses of $1.001 million for a net balance of $123,000. Harbor Fund has year-to-date revenue of $544,000 and year-to-date expenses of $674.5,000 for a net balance of negative $130.6,000. Sanitation Fund has year-to-date revenue of $1.18,000 and year-to-date, I'm sorry, $118,096 and expenditures of $98,404 for a net balance of $19.7,000. Any questions? Capital projects. We dispersed $10,192 for capital expenditures in February, $1,662 was for the trail project, $6,530 for the new wells, and $2,000 for the main hole repair project. So Bay Creek, we're at 7% of capital budget. Any questions? Tax collections. We've collected 93% of budgeted real estate tax revenue as of the end of February. I did receive information, a contract for review from Attorney James Elliott for delinquent tax collection. It's still under review, however, I did find out that fees incurred for his services will be paid by the homeowner at time of sale. For 2014 personal property license and machinery and tools taxes, we've collected 79% of budget. I did also, DMV is almost finished with our application, we'll receive a login and we'll be able to come stop on people so they can't register their calls. They've paid their balance due. For prior year, all property taxes, interest, and penalty collections, and this year, 15, we're at 103% of budget already. People are paying their bills and properties are being sold and collecting at sales day. Tax revenue comparison. Prior year's tax collections has surpassed budgeted amounts, and it's more than twice the amount of both '13 and '14. We actively work to collect several larger prior year business and personal property tax invoices, but the majority of this is due to real estate sales tract transactions. The rest of them are on the same trend as months prior. Meal's tax actually would be about $3,000 higher, someone turned in their payment a month in early March. It looks like the restaurants did well over the year. Everything else is just trending as it has been. Any questions?
Any further questions? I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion.
Second. No, no vote. All right, all in favor? Pass. Okay. Mayor report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The time I report there, let me just update you on a few things that are having such complaint. The plan commission didn't meet on the 3rd to discuss the final draft that was submitted by Ms. Mail for the conference plan. So those discussions are noted there, particularly about the language of the library, and also the zoning of the railroad adjacent properties, should they come into town? Right now, they're default zoned as an R1, so those are the plans that were discussed. So the comprehensive plan. The plan commissioners decided to extend the, offered to have the joint meeting on the 7th, which is in April, which was their next regular meeting, to hear their comments to the Town Council on the comprehensive plan. Ms. Mail from the Plan District Commission will also be in attendance that night. The second particular item that they discussed on the 3rd was the tourism zone. What was presented was the draft tourism zone. They had not considered the tourism zone draft since September of 2014, so that was presented to them again as it existed, where it currently exists. There was comments about it, not the use of which was that there was some concern about the threshold of participation, that the threshold currently in the draft ordinance wasn't there on the high side, and that there were businesses in town who would otherwise benefit from being in the tourism zone, that may not meet that capitalization threshold. There was also some discussion about the terminology of the program as a grant program. It's actually the tax year-to-date program rather than a grant program, so that language is going to be worked on as well, to remove the word grant, because people aren't being granted anything. If they qualify and upon completion of their project, they will get a return back of money that they've already paid to the town. Along with that, there was some discussion about what's the most appropriate way to report those financial changes back. At a certain point, success in the program means that the council is refunding money, and there needs to be a mechanism placed through the application process to ensure that when those decisions are made, council's aware that at a certain point, money's going out of treasury, back to the taxpayer with property warrants. They will pick this up again on the 7th. It was recommended that I have confirmation of Andy Foer from Business Association about that. We have, we met. He's got a copy of, we met, had a discussion, he had a copy of the draft, because he wasn't at the meeting that night. He's since made comments and email that I have, and I'll circulate those in the agenda for the planning commission. They've also invited me to participate at their meeting on August 8th, which I'm happy to participate in and talk about the draft as it is, and see if we can actually get more input from the Business Association into the tourism zone draft at this point.
And when is that meeting?
Plan commission's meeting on the 7th, and then the Business Association's meeting on the 8th of April, so two nights in a row. If you're available for that meeting, correct. That's it right now for the planning commission. They have nothing on their agenda. They won't be able to start the meeting except the joint meeting with new folks about the comprehensive plan, and then also to take up some more consideration of the draft of the tourism zone. If anything comes up additionally, two weeks away still, we'll get that on the agenda. Any questions about the planning commission?
I was wondering how they based, I guess, their hypothesis of reading, they made reference to the discussion of the language, and the updated comp plan about the library, and apparently the quotation here on that is more space is needed for the library. How do they go about basing that, recognizing that need, and is that something that you concur with? Do you have an opinion that you agree with the hypothesis that more space is needed for the library as we sit here now?
I'll answer the second floor. Second. How it got here is originally it was proposed to be removed, then it was proposed to be put back in for purposes of long-term planning, that eventually, one of these days, the library space will, there'll be, there'll be a need for additional library space.
Well, they're saying, this, the first half of this sentence says we're already at that point. More space is needed for the library. Come on. You agree with that?
I think not necessarily footprint space, but probably more floor foot, more space. You have floors up there that aren't accessible right now because of, you know, literally because of accessibility. So if, whether you'd find another, whether you'd find a place to put another building at this point, so I don't know about the sort of about the footprint of the library changing, but obviously the possibility of putting more square footage space towards library use in that building is something that I suppose over time can be done.
I'd like to point out, I'm sorry, I'm a member of the planning commission, I'm a councilwoman, and I'd like to point out that the purpose of the comp plan is to look five to 10 years into the future. The current library.
But the statement doesn't begin, five or 10 years in the future, we need more space.
That's the whole purpose of the comp plan is to address what you should be looking at, and I'm not sure about the specific wording. The wording used to be to monitor on an ongoing basis, and I wasn't at the meeting. But the bottom line is that the current library is probably, in my personal opinion and in opinion of some of the friends of the library and others, probably over 90% utilized, because when we expanded the library down at the new building, we had a, we had a computer room that is now private, we have a sitting room for people to sit and read, we have a sitting area for kids to read and play in, we have an area for teenagers, and all on the first floor.
Okay, Joe, I got it. I think this is more appropriately a question to raise to the planning commission, and it seems to me that down the road, we're gonna be reviewing the comprehensive plan.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but they brought it to a Town Council meeting, and it's part of a report, and he asked his questions.
I understand, but the question is, I think the question maybe, maybe Mr. Breach takes it back to the planning commission rather than answering this himself.
Okay, well, all that's fine. I was just concerned, you know, that, you know, opinion that it's more space is needed, says more space is needed now, you know, is there a way of, is there any way to measure that through volume, or is it just that once you get a majority opinion, then that constitutes the need? Or is there any statistical thing that's gonna happen that helps trigger?
There's always possible they do a facility study, and facility study, frankly, inventory of library, of shoulder space, was this appropriate, probably of square footage for things like computer labs. Libraries just aren't hope the cause of areas anymore. Frank, that issue, I think it is a good question. We are supposed to have a joint work session with the planning commission, so I think maybe that's one of the things we need to note and bring up in terms of what exactly that means, and when, what the timeframe is, and so on. I mean, I get it, I think others in here would get it as well. What do you think? Let's leave this for a work session, right?
Work session, I just think that it would, I think most of the people in town, we're on the press, and we invest a ton of money to get it in the library, even with the extra floors, that the idea that we'd be looking for possibly, which can be accomplished through expansion of the existing building, which I think that's a natural progression, or a new location, I, I question that right now, with all that expense, that how do we, you know, did we not buy a building big enough to start with? That would be a pretty substantial purchase to be right back at the same precipice of the, you know, reason we made that move. So I know there's a lot of enthusiasm for the library, but to me, you know, this, I think Commissioner Burke was on the right track, and if there's more space needed, then if you're gonna leave it in there, there should be some kind of way of justifying it, maybe size, mere opinion, but maybe, maybe that's all it needed to rule with that.
I don't want to jump into this. I think a library becomes a community center. We were discussing this before, and I asked you the last time you were in a library, you said when you were at Belmont Avenue at the college. So the libraries have grown quite a bit since then.
I've been.
Library size, the library size is adequate for now.
We're gonna base the need on that library of being a 30.
We listen to you. No, don't, we listen to you. Let me finish. No, no, don't forget to defend me. We listen to you all the time. Possibly in the future, we will do a, need a larger library. Hopefully, if it catches on and more, as more people move here. Right, and at this point, I would like to end this discussion.
And the same could be said for all facilities, as the time's gonna grow.
It is true, and this is a conversation we had when we talked to the planning commission about exactly what they need and how that goes forward, and that's, that is, I think, when we should have this. We go on? We go on, Frank?
I don't know, we want to go around the table and ask everybody when the last time we were in a library, maybe we can move.
No, I happen to agree with your assessment of that sentence, Frank. And I think we should take it up at the joint meeting, because I totally agree with what you said.
Well, with that, I'm stunned, and I'll, let's move on.
You shouldn't be stunned.
Reasonable thought. Okay. Please go on.
Thank you. Historic District Review Board, subsequent, now the 24th of February, which was a snowy night, so they were short two board members as a result. The election was put off till the March 17th meeting, which we just had, you know, the 19th, Darrell was re-elected as chairman, and John Katton as president. What they discussed at the February 24th meeting was some administrative matters that they would like to discuss further, including application fee and new construction guidelines. Those were, they tasked me at that point to look into some data about application fees and other fees associated with participating in either Historic District Review Board or Architectural Review Board, so I get the data from some community similar to ours around the Commonwealth. Did the same thing with the information about the construction guidelines. That'll be on the agenda for their special meeting that they'll have a week from, a week from last year, so on the 24th, they'll have a special meeting to discuss those things. Those weren't put on the original agenda for the 17th, because we had two applications. One was for an application at 205 Jefferson for a rear porch and deck, and the other one was at 638 Taswell for major renovations to that building, including removable chitneys, complete restructuring of the back porch, and readjustment of windows, replacing windows. What the applicant had in mind is to make her house basically the twin, the house adjacent to the east, which is to say the Purple House, so what she's proposing was designed very similar to the Purple House at, I wonder, 646th as well. So those were the two applicants. The board spent a lot of time with both applications, both were given specific appropriateness with some conditions attached, so we will continue to monitor those. The house on Taswell was specifically cited as, as soon as she brings her architect's final plans in, they need to come to the planner's office, planner's office will then take those plans back to the Historic District Review Board to ensure compliance with what we're talking about, because we don't want to get this equation where people are given to this appropriateness and go off and do work that haven't been approved. So that's what we stand with the Historic District Review Board. Again, they'll be meeting on the 24th at Town Hall in the conference room on the second floor. Board of Zoning Appeals did not meet.
Any questions? Any further questions? Thank you very much. Next, we have code report.
I don't know if anything add to our report, unless council has any question for me.
All looking pretty positive.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I got a question. Sure. In regard to the Patrick Ham project, I forget the formal name of that.
Strawberry Street Station is what I know it as right now.
I guess, my observation, I was hoping he'd have been a little farther along to the point of completion of his demolition rather than to have it in the status. Has he got you a tie frame that's fully buttoned up?
He's been out of town quite a bit recently. I have it on my list to call him this week. I have not had a chance of, it was brought up at our staff meeting as well, to kind of get a timeframe on getting the rest of that demolition out of there. So we're gonna, we're gonna press him to get it done.
Thank you.
Yes, sure.
Any other questions? Thank you. Let's see, Harper, now Harper.
I have nothing to ask you, but I have any question.
I've got a question, I guess. The treasurer given a report, it showed, uh, Barbara had a deficit, and I think it's, you reported for the highest it's got to do with the price of fuel, or, or no? What constitutes a hundred and thirty down from last?
Well, uh, the majority of our income comes in April, May, and June. We have debt service, I think, uh, that takes place prior to that.
So we need the similar type of numbers last year than the April, May, June claims.
Yeah, I think last year with the debt service being higher, we were still, uh, down or worshiping the demolition, I believe. I think, uh, time manager, I asked the treasurer to answer that question, but I don't know. I do believe, uh, April, May, June are three of our better months.
I don't remember last year for four, if you say it's part of a natural cycle, show deficit this time of year than, than the...
We're most part of, our, our lower numbers is, our low is, is in March. Unless crab starts in March, and crab starts in March, it takes up a...
Yeah, if, if, Frank, if you, if you turn back to the treasurer's report, there is a prior year to be called. And at this point, last year, the number was negative two sixteen point six. So it was negative one third point six.
So we're actually doing, doing better. Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Can I, can I move into the library? Well, you can read the report, if there are any questions, we can get them in.
Today's going to be a book club meeting with the group of the author on Sunday afternoon to the fore, and then the author and Kate Bray and Sherri Reynolds will have a, um, a meeting on the book signing at seven.
Chief Pruitt.
Not much. You see on our council report that, uh, kind of had to shift gears a little bit last month due to the snow. Maybe checked two hundred and fifty houses last month. We helped water leaks and, uh, we put it on our Facebook page, and people that outside, you know, out of here for their vacation rentals, they want to check. And we got a small amount of that, so it's been, we've been a couple of days just going out and checking that. We have to shift gears a little bit, or something is redundant, and it's all right, everything's frozen, so, um, but that's about it. We also hope to get approval in the budget for body cameras for all of us, plus at least one extra one, in case something happens going on. So we've had demos. We did a provision came here, did a demo for us. Eyewitness came, and, uh, then there's on the third was watch guard, watch, yeah, watch guard, but her survived and passed him to come. But, um, one of the light, or, or an element, less than half, more than second person, that's for us. Hopefully, uh, we can get them into work, so we've done that the last couple of weeks.
We're going, we're going to try to fit that in this year's budget.
Definitely.
Because it's a, well, it's a relative model, it's a investment. Protecting both the police officers and the citizens.
We should have turned on front, like the guy, no, you got a new camera and then didn't turn it on.
Either the month you forget the handle that you're not used to.
Sure.
Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Public utilities, uh...
Joe?
Uh, Dave is on vacation this week. I would note that Chief Pruitt mentioned checking for water leaks. You see in the utilities report, uh, water production in February was four point eight, almost four point eight million gallons. Much of that was lost due to leaks that bring us all over town. Did go back and check the production for February two thousand and fourteen, it was three million gallons. So we had a lot of, a lot of ice around town. Luckily, I missed it all, it was one on Colorado, but it was here. But it's a, it's a pretty stunning comparison if you look at, uh, the water production this February versus last February. I'm sure your officers spent a lot of time up and down the lakes and public utilities throughout. So that's why that, that ended so hard. And I think it's, it's the first time, sometime, that it's actually abstracted to waste water. It's higher than reasonable for it. Typically, that's higher equals than for a little bit. We did have a little bump up in nitrogen average, uh, almost double the annual limit, again, on a monthly basis. Dave is on vacation, as I said, I'm going to find out why that is. I'm sure it is because of bitter cold, usually the bacteria will react too well to wild swings in temperature. And I'm sure that's just a anomaly because of, uh, bitter cold. So that's, um, that's all, I think, the highlights. On the second page, we'll talk a little bit about, uh, award of a manhole repair contract. I'll talk a little bit, we'll request approval to award the manhole repair contract later on in the evening. And, uh, we are also, uh, going to suggest real, approval to reallocation of thirty thousand dollars to install the chloramine system at the water plant to deal with the TPH issue. Those are the highlights in the utility report, and I confess, don't really have any highlights in the public works report. They've been basically doing, uh, normal maintenance around town. So if you've got any questions, let me know, and when Dave gets back, I'll go ahead and catch us some answers.
Recreation?
I'll add one thing to the public works. If anybody knows the town's courts are down, we've had some trouble with the lights, we are working on those. Hopefully, we can hope by the end of this week, but that hasn't happened to us. Very shortly, they'll be back. It was a safety issue, so we had to close it down. So if anything happens, they can refer to us, that is the reason. Sorry, well, okay.
Equality, equal to.
Gotcha.
And they were playing tennis at night in February.
Well, it was, we had that, believe it or not, we had that one nice day, and our phones rang. Everybody played tennis, so, yeah, it happens, everybody, you haven't been cooped up, so, you know, we need some. Um, I just wanted to give you guys a quick update with summer coming quickly and all the activity on the beach. We're getting more and more questions about, um, safety on the beach, so the staff has been working on a proposal estimate for a swim area. Uh, we've put together three different estimates. The first would cover from the jetty to Randolph, then from jetty to Tazwell, and jetty to Monroe. The estimate right now for the jetty to Randolph is right around three thousand dollars. The jetty to Tazwell is right around six, and then the jetty to Monroe is right around eight thousand. There's still a couple of other things we're looking into. We have a place out, the actual roof, the line yet, but that would include the boulevures and then everything to anchor the buoys in.
All that's going to change. Swim area is going to be way out compared to what it used to be.
It is, we may have to adjust some of the measurements that we did, that is a very good point, so.
It'll, it'll, most of Jetty's estimate is, you know, the horizontal, so, yeah.
We, we went from there, that little, um, like picnic area, I guess you could call it, on the, um, the fishing gear. We went from there, but we may have to...
Like to push it out a little.
But it gave us something to do, it's an idea.
We need, we need to, people need to, once the, once the bulldozer is done, and all that's leveled, we need to really go out and see how bad a drop off you're going to have, because this sand is way out there. And that's right in the place where the board ran. So now you don't have any beach, you know, you've got, you're going to have a straight drop from shallow water to deep. And the sand, you're putting it in, and they're high as a redwood on the inside, probably even when it tops up.
Yeah, that's about right. Paul's in. I heard you were having six volleyball nets this summer.
No, no. But there's a lot of...
Also, somebody's made the comment...
It's always best if you ask me before anybody else. No, we, we just have the one, um, I mean, we, before, we cannot add anymore because of the beach space. And now that we have so much more space, we can certainly look into it. It's, uh, something everybody enjoys during the summer, so, I didn't even think about that thinking.
The other thing I've got to say, I feel sorry for Peter's little beach banner.
They, they are addressing that, I worry about you, that they are looking into ways to speed that process up, because they realize how much of a work it's going to be. So they are looking into that.
Yeah, it will be, you're actually right, we're going to have to relook at the estimates as the sand settles out. The, the good thing is that they should be done with the beach replant here in about a week or so. And we've got some time for the, they'll work on it and level all that out. And these, all the, most of these, actually, all this stuff is in stock, you can order about a catalog, so shouldn't be any...
Basically, the cost of the buoys was right around one fifty, and then each set to anchor down in forty was, uh, around seventy. So it's an easy, it's an easy first.
It's about a, about a four-week turnaround.
Uh, three or four weeks for the paperwork to be dialed out. And I got the application, so, you know, we're ready, we can, we can get it in pretty quickly. And I think if they, if we call with, you know, our urgency with what happened last summer, we may be able to...
So the council will have to make a decision of how, how wide you want the swim area. Basically, want to go one avenue, two avenues, or three avenues. We do, the good thing is, particularly if we do much of the work ourselves as far as installing them, that, uh, it should be well within the ten thousand dollars preserved in immediate view to do the, uh, the safety improvements.
Yeah, maybe that's the most expanded, I think we can follow that budget, if that's what you is.
I have a question, and I don't think it's addressed to you, I think it's more addressed to Bob. And some, like Steve, from your engineering background, um, do you think that us putting in those buoys for safeties of, for swimmers is an infrastructure improvement? And, and I'm asking because if we think it might qualify the county as an infrastructure grant?
It is, though.
Then we could apply for it to see if we could get some of the county money, some tourism to... It seems to me like it's a safety issue, but it's also, I just want to put it on the table to think about, you know, can't hurt Dallas.
Worth asking.
Yeah. Uh, this is the, the tourism infrastructure grant?
Remember Marion McDevitt got one four or five years ago? The county is still doing that.
What did she get it for?
We would do something, I think we put microphone systems...
Music.
For music at the beach for sunset, and there was a platform at the north end of the beach, I think we did something there, too, didn't we?
Yes, yes, it's true.
Okay.
They, they, we, uh, we built, yes, we built those...
Cardi platforms?
The, the platforms.
Right, okay.
Long and kai.
Yeah.
Right, that's what it was.
One of which got taken by sand. Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll check.
I think it's worthwhile checking into.
Yeah. And I think when, when, when Chris and Deb went to present our budget request to the county, Deb got some feedback later that they were considering a contribution for weed safety from the county budget. So we'll see if that survives. But we do have, uh, we do have sufficient resources to get, maybe back.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Next, we're going to roll business, the Kate Charles Wolf who used Trail things to update.
Yeah, and, uh, this, this isn't a, a big update. We are, the invitation to bids is out, has been out for some time. Bids are due March twenty-fifth. We may have to extend that a few days to, uh, some of the potential bidders. I had some questions about where to tie in the water system, maybe that, uh, consultants are working on that. So we may have to extend that until, uh, maybe the thirtieth. But by that time, we will have a bid opening, and hopefully, the construction will be within budget. Being as optimistic as we normally are, we say that the contract board should correct the April meeting. That's assuming that we get VDOC permits, they control this very carefully. It's not just like a normal contract board, you pick the lowest responsible, and responsible bidder. You know, all the documentation's got to go back to VDOC, and they're going to, say, go ahead and do it. Hopefully, it'll happen in April, and, uh, then we'll be on our way. It'll be about an eight-month construction. We'll sit down with the contractor, and hopefully, we'll be able to get them to start at the beach and work that way, so we're out of there for the summer season.
Questions?
Do you really expect, they have a time period within which they're supposed to review and approve the bids?
I, 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 I'm speaking, well, I'll move it quickly. Well, we've only done one, and, um, I wasn't involved. Now, Jim, do you remember how long it took VDOC to, um, manage?
Uh, it was pretty long.
To review the bids?
Probably two to three weeks.
Yeah, I don't think it was, I don't think it was that long. Uh, we've, we've been getting fairly decent turnaround. And, and of course, the delay in this, getting this awarded is, is one of the, actually, the primary reason that our capital expenditure is so small versus budget, because this is, uh, this is the bulk of our general capital expenditures of the budget this year.
Tom, Frank, Ray?
Yeah, I have a question. I think at one point you had, there's been some reengineering of the bulk getting around the boardwalk at the north end. You, you alluded to Superstorm Sandy, and they're undermining, you had it redesigned there to make sure...
Yes, what, we lost, uh, we lost, if you go down there and take a look, we've lost a significant amount of sand over the past two years in that area. If I recall, the current survey versus the old survey, we had probably, probably about three feet of sand. And, um, there is a stormwater outfall that goes out there, and all of that armor, rock armor, is over that stormwater outfall that goes east-west. And now, if you go down there, the, the stormwater pipe from where the rock ends to the concrete boardwalk is actually exposed to stumps. So it's about forty feet, and, uh, we are, we did have to do a redesign to armor that stormwater pipe. And we've gotten, that's actually on, um, Mr. Schlegan's property. So we've obtained an easement from him to go ahead and armor that stormwater pipe. So yes, that's correct.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, next is budget reallocation.
Revisiting the discussion we had at the vendor meeting. At that time, we recalled that, um, council decided to go ahead with a compensation study implementation, eleven thousand. Fifty thousand for purchasing the Strawberry Street Plaza, and twenty thousand for loose parking area improvements, and taking the rest until the manhole bid came in. With that bid coming in at forty-one thousand seven ninety-two, and a, a firm price of fifteen thousand for the Pine Street Lot Trash Management Area, um, we're in a position now for you to go ahead and decide about the remaining allocations. Um, we still have left two thousand for the Harbor for the Arts Festival Marketing, one thousand for the Tourism Brochure Map, fifteen thousand for the hundred percent design, Pine Street Lot Trash Management Area, and that is an increase of five thousand of our February's report. And also ten thousand for the beach swimming area safety measures. For Water Sewer Fund, um, eight thousand eight hundred for the new truck, and thirty-three thousand for the chloramine system. And that brings the total to reallocate tonight, if you so choose, sixty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. That would leave a thirty-eight thousand eight hundred as a potential rainy day fund, and twenty-one thousand for remaining contingency.
Any questions?
Is there any reason we couldn't add the body cams? It's twenty-four hundred dollars for six of them, is that, did I hear you right, four hundred dollars?
About three thirty.
No reason at all?
Betty, any problems with that?
And we've actually probably saved even a little bit more salary money, uh, due, due to this play. Getting to have an attract force.
Oh, that's true.
You want to go away another three months?
No, I do not.
How many, you wanna get six body cams? A three or four?
Let's just put that four.
Four hundred, yeah, this should be.
By the time you do that.
Six at four hundred.
Do that.
Okay.
Uh, one, one thing I'd, I'd like to have, um, make sure to cancel, um, a couple of these items, um, understands a little bit of the implications of these. And we, we did talk about them, I think, in the budget retreat, and that type of thing, just to refresh your memory. The, the first one, the two thousand dollars for Harbor for the Arts Festival Marketing, um, there, uh, the current estimate that Art Center has put together for the festival this year, I think it's thirteen to fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, they are, uh, creating some partnerships and raising some money and that type of thing, but it is, it is very likely, uh, that, uh, they will be, well, not likely, they have asked town for five thousand dollars in next year's budget to, uh, to actually, uh, fund performances and that type of thing. We, uh, we've included that as a draft budget, and it's something that, uh, we believe can be accommodated within the tourism component of the budget and supported by transient occupancy tax revenues. But this is, um, uh, this is pretty much a commitment that we're gonna do this festival because, uh, they're gonna start marketing. It was very, very successful, very, very popular last year, bringing people to town. I just wanted you to be aware that this, this is pretty much a commitment to go.
It's a commitment for two thousand dollars.
It is.
Yes.
It is. But there's gonna be a festival of some sort. Uh, but people are gonna be very disappointed. Uh, the, uh, the Tourism Brochure, uh, we will have to put that, uh, that's the map. Uh, we, we will have to go out and get quotes for that. I've started to, uh, some preliminary discussions on that, and the, uh, the intent there is to have a map, a tourism-related map for people to get around town, where maybe the highlights are. And we hope that's gonna do double duty, where we'll be able to use that artwork, if you will, uh, for the wayfinding system that, uh, we're gonna propose in next year's budget, uh, for maps at the welcome center of the beach in downtown. The, the big one that, and we've talked about the, the, the ten thousand dollar estimate for, uh, beach safety. We think we can bring it in for that. The one I really wanted to focus on is, is the fifteen thousand dollars, uh, for Pine Street. That is the estimate that we've got from Ryan Studio to do a complete one-hundred percent bid package for essentially the, if, if you think about what's behind the library, the paved area, current paved area, where we would have dumpsters, uh, underground, um, uh, used cooking oil storage, uh, alley access to, uh, the alley, uh, behind, uh, between Randolph and Mason Avenue. Uh, as well as a couple of handicap park response and, um, a few other park response. This is to do the whole thing, that portion that was in the conceptual design, which would include reinforced pads for the dumpsters, as I mentioned, underground, uh, used oil storage, and then redoing that, uh, curb cut and apron. It would have to be wide and also reinforced concrete. That doesn't really get you any parking, except for a few spots, but it cleans up that area. It does allow us to really do trash management in that area and have alley access. We're gonna do screening for the dumpsters. And screening, yes, screening for the dumpsters, and we, and, you know, we probably plan a row of, uh, something to the north of it to screen the whole thing for people. But that's, that's the.
So that's, that's for the design of that?
Not only the design.
Not for doing.
That's correct, that's very my design. And, and the reason it's so high is, is, uh, I, I didn't, I'm sorry I didn't bring the proposal, but a, a good chunk of that, uh, I think in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars is, is for stormwater management analysis. Under the new Chesapeake Bay, um, regulations, we have to reduce runoff twenty percent now. Post-development has to be twenty percent reduction, so, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of work, uh, involved with figuring out how to do that. And once we, once we start ripping, it's, it's over twenty-five hundred feet of disturbance, and once we start ripping stuff up, including concrete pads and underground storage, it won't be there. Uh, there is a, there is a poor man's way of doing it. Uh, the asphalt's in pretty good shape right now. Uh, we could just do the reinforced concrete apron coming in, uh, not do the concrete pads, just reorient the dumpsters, take down the chain link fence around it, and leave the cryo, the storage above ground. Uh, and you can avoid doing the stormwater management stuff because we're not doing any land disturbance per se. Uh, we're probably in the neighborhood of five to seven thousand dollars to, to have a bid package for that. My personal view is, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right, uh, and get on down the road here. Uh, but, uh, but it is fifteen thousand dollars. So I just.
I agree with you. Don't, don't do it half-assed right now. Okay, just a question here, that we're going to improve this fifteen thousand for the efficient design as part of this solution. So, so what we need to do is we need to modify that to seven and go to a lower, if the, uh, a less.
Ambitious.
Ambitious design.
Correct.
So, um, any questions on this discussion, thoughts, comments? We're gonna vote on.
Are you asking, do you think it's fifteen to seven?
I'm not asking, I'm just saying.
I asked you before, what do you say?
No, 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 no. This is as a whole, of which the fifteen thousand is, is a portion. Are there any questions?
All right, why don't I just make a motion that we approve the list as presented with the addition of two thousand four hundred dollars for police body cams?
Uh, second at least.
And at this point, then, we can have further discussion, is there any?
I'd like, uh, to have Bob, uh, the most expensive item on there is a water plant, or.
Chlorine.
Chlorine system. Can you give us the Reader's Digest version of why that's necessary and what it accomplishes?
Yeah, we have, um, a Reader's Digest version. We have thi-, we have, we have things in our water called tri-, trihalomethics or something like that. TTHMs, total trihalomethics. Uh, these are byproducts of disinfection with chlorine. Uh, we have, uh, we use chlorine for two things, one, it oxidizes the iron, helps oxidize the iron, it takes the iron out of the water, and you have to have a residual amount of chlorine in the distribution system to prevent the growth of bacteria. Uh, we have a high, uh, relatively high level of bromides in the raw water. When you use chlorine to disinfect, it creates TTHMs. Uh, TTHM levels are now regulated by EPA, and, uh, we have been struggling for about four years now uh, to keep our TTHM levels within limits. And we often bump just slightly, slightly, slightly over the limit. When, and when you do that, uh, you, you gotta take corrective action. Parking permit requires you to take corrective action, the least of which, uh, is that you've gotta notify all the customers, that you've broken a, a primary contaminant level. Uh, and you gotta do something about it. So, uh, we have spent, uh, I don't know, probably thirty, forty thousand dollars, um, engineering to solve the TTHM problem. Uh, we've also been doing things like flushing the water system more frequently. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the, the, the problems that we suffer with is, again, because of the large amount of infrastructure that we have, uh, and the, the type of community that we are, where we have a lot of, um, vacation and temporary, uh, temporarily occupied homes, is that we don't get a lot of natural flushing through the distribution system. Uh, when that happens, uh, TTHM levels build up. So, we've gotta solve the issue, uh, VDH requires us to solve the issue. Uh, one of the ways to solve it, we hope, is to put in this automatic flushing system. Uh, the other way is a chloramine system. A chloramine system is a different way of disinfecting, uh, it's using ammonia, uh, as opposed to chlorine, and it would, uh, well, actually, an addition to chlorine. And, uh, that produces fewer TTHMs, fewer disinfection byproducts, uh, and it would be used probably, we're having some discussions with VDHIs, probably only during, uh, the one month. It's a, it's a bigger problem during the one month.
No, we validate the TTHMs and get good with the state. What, what effect does it have on the drinkability and perhaps smell of the water?
There shouldn't be, shouldn't be any problem with drinkability or smell. It does have, you, you, if you have tropical fish, it has some issues with tropical fish. You can't, uh, you can't, you can't put the water in your aquarium. Okay? You have to use non-chloramine system in order for tropical fish, that's the only thing that, that I'm aware of. I, I, there's a little bit more than Reader's Digest.
Right, any further discussion? Uh, call in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, next up is, um, how about we hit some minutes?
Uh, I'm tired of, uh, Patrick, uh, last month, I had to deal with, uh, proposed rates, uh, and a rate structure of, uh, yearly, uh, semi-annual, and, uh, quarterly billing, uh, language. Since that, uh, had the, uh, after request of the yacht club, uh, wanted to use that to talk, uh, nursing concern with the short timing, uh, that they couldn't, uh, they would prefer, they asked if they could get monthly, uh, billing. I, at the time, I, uh, I told them I would bring it back to pension, uh, we would, uh, discuss it. Uh, I don't think of the problem grandfathering him, that as long as the payments are, uh, on a month, uh, a month basis and the credit cards on file, uh, the payment's not in by tenth, uh, which wouldn't regard anyway in charge of the three percent, uh, credit card fee, uh, on top of, um, anybody that signs on the new per step would go one, one of those three, uh, payment plans. Uh, so I guess this time I'm asking, uh, if you, if you mind changing, uh, the rate structure, um, two monthly. Or allowing, not changing two monthly, but allowing as presented.
For, for returning slip overs.
Or, yeah, grandfathering for returning slip overs.
Under these provisions, credit card, I thought.
Why did you wanna go to the quarterly, semi-annual, and annual billing in the first place? Wasn't it to save your time?
Well, it's, it's staff hours, uh, for one. Uh, two, uh, we spend a lot of time with credit cards that get declined, uh, whether it had been filed by somewhere else or something like that, uh, so then we go to swipe a card every month, and it comes with decline, and if we gotta reach out and find you. Uh, so, a lot a month starts off with, with kinds of reports and stuff like that, plus billing and everything else. So it's normally two days, the first two days of our month is two per month. Uh, and that's on a normal basis, and then if they got signed, that takes up more time, so the, the thought process was, was to, uh, make things go a little smoother if it was prepaid. Uh, I didn't, to be honest with you, I, I did think that it was a little cost hardship, uh, on some, uh, and I understood what they said, um, the planning, having more time to plan, uh, would, they, it would be better for them right now, within a month, because they got their, they got their agreements, uh, Sunday night, February the twentieth, I think. Uh, and so they got them maybe twenty-third, twenty-fourth, they have to be back to about fifteenth of March. And it took February first, I can understand, uh, that.
Do you keep a credit card on file for everybody that's renting a slip?
Uh, we will, we are, we'll be ready to, from, for the most yet, but we are, uh, starting March, so if I, if I, if I, if I tell if there are damages or anything else, so, yes.
And do you have a year, I mean, is your year the fiscal year, or is your year January to January?
Uh, I, uh, since I'm getting, I haven't changed it, but the, the, the day I started, uh, April first, two thousand five was the, the actual.
That's the beginning of your year.
That's when it started, it was just, I, I fell in on it the first day, and, and that's what I walked into. I, I never changed it, I never understood, uh, uh, why it entered, well, I guess I kinda did, uh, because taxes for one. Uh, everybody's getting their taxes back around April, uh, and I think, uh, it helps, it's the budget cycle. So that we started a budget so we could plan on how many peoples can have surges or whatever, so I think it was all.
I'm a little surprised you didn't notice before you proposed it, since you seem, you know, I think you're pretty close to your customers, but, um, the reason you proposed it was to save staff hours and save money.
Well, and, and hardship too. We had a settlement, uh, and there's some, um.
Not, not to change back, to change it originally, to go to the three billing systems that you're going to.
Yeah, that, uh, well, originally, when I first started working here, it was pay upfront, pay a whole year. Uh, then we dropped it back, brought it to council to, um, come quarterly and semi-annual, and then that was some hardships, uh, that led to the economy by then, we went to a monthly thing, uh, but I didn't realize at the time how much extra steps it was gonna be. Uh, and over time, it's, it's, it's been a lot of extra steps and, and nothing.
Is the plan to allow those who are grandfathered in to continue paying, to pay monthly as long as they have the slip? Or do you plan to bridge over so that they pay quarterly?
Uh, I think that's for discussion between, uh.
No, I mean, I, if I was making a motion, I, I would make a motion that this monthly billing only be allowed for a certain period of time so that they, they know it's coming, they can plan for, and then they can go to the plan that Smitty thinks is best, but however, which I think is a goo-, a better plan than having them have to do all of that every month.
Technically, that's what you would prove, you would under this proposal, because you have to set a rate structure every year. But to, to make it clear, I think that's a, that's.
Well, and I think something else too, I think, uh, I think, uh, something that would help this process out a little bit, maybe we change and we discuss the rates for next year in November or December. Uh, that way it gives them a five months, uh, because. And that way it gives people five months, because when it comes to transit rates, we really need to be discussing the extra transit rates now, so we can start advertising, of course, extra steps we have to take with the state, with the voting infrastructure graphic that comes to transit rates. So it's, yeah, I see what you're saying, so, well, maybe we take steps to discuss these things sooner, rather than putting off to February.
So, what I'll do, I'll take a motion, a second on this, and then I'll listen to your amendment, and we'll vote on it.
It's not an amendment, I would just make the motion that we agree to grandfather the existing slip owners in, to allow them to continue monthly billing until the beginning of the year, next year, which was April first, two thousand sixteen.
Just, just one clarification for your consideration, it's not billing, they're not going to.
Well, I don't pay.
Pay.
Payment. That's fine.
Let me, let me ask, maybe I missed, misreading you. Base rates, you said, will be increased by twenty-five cent a foot if the customer chooses, semi-annual, and fifty cent a foot if he chooses to pay quarterly. Why are you punishing the customer if he wants to pay more than twice a year?
Well, the, the thought process was to skip one foot, to pay, to encourage people to pay all at one time at a one rate. If he wants to pay, it's, I think what you're reading with this is, if you pay a year late, you get a cheaper rate. If you pay semi-annual, your rate's a little bit more. If you pay quarterly, it's a little bit more than that. And I'm, I'm not.
But, but under that scenario, he's billing.
Yeah, correct.
There's staff time to send out bills for semi-annual or whatever billing. So if you'd like that payment option, you pay privilege, if you pay for that privilege, you can bill.
Is it incentive for the owner to pay upfront and pay less? It's like taxes and.
Well, I mean, that's true if you pay less, if you, if you pay it right upfront. But if you pay it four times a year, you're paying double the amount, you're adding another quarter on your foot, rather than pay it semi-annual, which is only twice a year. I don't understand that. I mean, I would see it be reversed if you're going to pay it semi-annual, it should be fifty cent a foot, if you're going to pay it quarterly, it should be twenty-five cent a foot.
No, it's add, that's adding to the current rate. In other words, the after annual slip holder, if you pay it on a year, it's five twenty-five a foot.
What's the current rate?
That, to make it to all approved, for annual, it's five twenty-five a foot. So if you pay semi-annual, it'll be five fifty a foot, and pay quarterly, it'll be five seventy-five a foot.
I understand that. So, so.
It was twenty-five cents more.
Yeah, just, just like the property taxes, if you can pay your property taxes, it's the installments. So if you pay installments, you pay more. The more the installments, the more you pay. Right? But I think I'm, I understand your question.
Go ahead, I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Okay. All right, so can you give the words again to Libby so that we have this.
We've got, we've got.
Yeah?
I just don't have a stack.
So.
I have a question about your motion, because I'm not sure if we need to include the three percent fee for credit card.
Doesn't that already exist?
It's already in there.
Yeah, already, already in there.
That's what I was asking.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's part of the.
Right. Yeah, I think all you were doing, where you're at, was adding some words. Right? So, we have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next on the agenda is appointing, appointing a zoning administrator.
Okay, I'll go ahead and brief this one. The, the attached staff report is an excerpt from the zoning ordinance that requires the appointment of a zoning administrator. In the absence of that, the town manager is the zoning administrator. Larry's been with us for a couple of months, and he's been in stellar job, and we have very comprehensive functions as zoning administrator. So we're recommending council appoint Mr. Brady as the zoning administrator per the zoning ordinance.
So.
That's it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Carried. Sewer system manhole rehabilitation.
Okay, I guess I'll do my default.
Great.
Attention. Okay, we, we did have, this is for the rehabilitation of, of the sewer system manholes. Dave and his crew, the whole contract support, have done extensive inspection of manholes. They've identified thirty-three that require repair. Some repairs are greater than others, but a lot of water coming into the system through those thirty-three manholes. Three manholes have to be rebuilt, and we do need to resurface two of the fine screen vaults at the wastewater point. There's some deterioration, surface deterioration, same type of work, it's concrete work, mortar work. He got three bids, the, the process was delayed because of the bad weather. He got three bids, one was over a hundred thousand dollars, a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. One was in the high fifties, sixty. This one is just under forty-two thousand, it's from Easton Shore Land Management. It does seem a little odd that the land management company are doing this, but this is essentially just some masonry work. They do have people that can do that kind of work. We have contracted to ESLM before, they have been very reliable and responsible contractor, and we recommend them from award of the contract to ESLM.
I'll make that motion, maybe we award contract to ESLM as well.
Could say about forty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next thing is hiring a facilities painting contractor.
Yes. We, we do obviously have a lot of public facilities, many of which we period of painting. Dave developed a concept of essentially a task order contract, go out for bids for phase and facilities as budget resources allow. We did put out an IFB, we had two bidders. The low bid for twenty-four thousand three fifty was from Mr. Bill Widgeon. Dave got one other bid, which he said was almost double this amount. I, I don't have the name of the company with me. Anyway, Mr. Widgeon has contracted with us before, and he's done a fine job. In fact, he painted the exterior of this building. And he does good work, I think he's pretty respected around town as a painter. And as I said, we're not spending twenty-four thousand three fifty by approval of this contract, which contractual vehicle in place. And as things need painted and are budgeted, we will issue a task order to Mr. Widgeon to, to paint. So we are recommending award of the contract to Mr. Widgeon.
Have a motion? A second?
I have one question.
Do I have a second?
You second.
Yeah, I thought, I thought Steve's.
I can say.
Sorry.
Do I have a second to this?
Second.
Well, okay. You moved, you second. All right, just, didn't you just move?
No.
All right. Now, have some discussion, questions?
My, my question has to do with, with the statement, that's what I'm trying to do at the moment, as, as money, rescheduled as money becomes available. And I guess my question is, is there an end date to this project? Is it within the big year, or taking on for five years?
It, it could go on as long, up to the, up to the level of twenty-four thousand three hundred fifty dollars. So if, for example, in the, in, in, in next year's budget, if there's twenty-four thousand three hundred fifty dollars worth of painting approved in, in facilities maintenance as part of the facilities, then, then he does it all in that year, then.
Doesn't it, it has to be in the budget now?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm totally confused by this. I mean, I get it on a task order delivery contract, but I mean, the contract is awarded with him having the potential of getting no awards, because money may not become available, and then is, as available in the materials and supplies budget line isn't a place for maintenance money, as far as I'm concerned, what that means.
Well, in the, he, we have, he, he, Dave budgets a certain amount for each facility for material supplies, and also some contractual maintenance, and that's up to that. The.
I mean, there's a line item for contracted maintenance, isn't there?
There, there is.
Why wouldn't it go in there?
We cert, we could put it in there. I think that's a good, good catch.
If you do that, you contract also, it's a much.
Yeah.
If we, we execute a contract, but we don't budget the money, what happens?
You might as well take no awards.
No worries. But he's, he's aware of that, it's not that when we sign the contract, he made it to spend the money.
That is correct.
All right.
And I'm asking, looking at it from another point of view, another, that other point of view is if this, presumably they could go on for two or three years, does he understand that he can't raise his price if his, if his expenses go up? He understands this is an open-ended?
Yes.
Okay. That, that's what I was trying to figure out. Okay.
Yep. These are, these are firm bids.
Okay.
For those. But I, I, I can't, I can't imagine it going on that long. I mean, you do a fair amount of facilities painting.
I know, but it doesn't have an end date, and that's what just makes me think it could go on.
It could go on.
Okay. I would like to suggest, and I feel that we have an end date for some of these things.
Okay.
Yes, I have a few questions. I did. Mr. Widgeon does good work. I guess I'm a little confused with, we have four people in Public Works, and earlier we had a Public Utilities Report where in the Water Department, we have a person that specializes in maintenance, Jared Elliott, in wastewater, it's, currently Dan, Dan Davenett with Billy Powell's Maintenance Supervisor, and then we have those we all see riding around town in the trucks as they look for brush every day, and other, other jobs that they have. But is, is not painting, painting the pumping stations, the trim on the outside and inside, is that not a form of, maintenance out of us? Have we ever done that in-house with?
I don't know, Frank, I'd have to go back and check.
Okay.
But.
I see that obviously something like the, maybe the chemical room, filter room at the water plant, something that's, something like that might be contracting out. But these pumping stations, seems like that the amount of personnel we have, and people specifically field maintenance, I mean, I don't know, private sector, I would think, you know, anyway, something like, you know, painting is a form of maintenance of which we have people hired to do. So I just didn't know, is any real, is that, has that been sized up and seen that that's not appropriate, or are we just?
I think, I think that's a discussion we probably have with the Director of Public Works, one-on-one, but my personal view is that it would be kind of a waste of manpower to have a, for example, in the water plant, wastewater plant, these are technicians and trained to have equipment.
Well, I'm not talking about the technicians, I'm not talking about the class operators per se, I'm talking about people of maintenance behind their names.
That's true.
Or titles.
That's true.
And then you have other public works folks as well.
They do, it's, it's a matter of.
I mean, what I, I was looking, when I came to the meeting, I was looking at the Plum Street Pumping Station, which is, remember, four doors down from my house, but to me that, I don't know, it seems like that's not a great big aim job. But I, I just question, you know, as far as efficiency, if he'd be more symbolically efficient or inefficient, and why, why there wouldn't, what amount of consideration was given to whether or not our crew could do any, some or any of this?
The crew, if you would like, if council would like, the Public Works crew would paint, they can paint, but then in order to clear brush, they're not going to pick that brush, they're not going to clear gutters, but there are other things that aren't going to get done. And this is something that the Director of Public Works evaluates every year instead.
I don't, I don't, see, I'd make a difference with this, either for proposition, instead of riding around looking for brush five days a week, if you did that just two days a week, then you've got time to do other things. But I, I don't want to belabor it, but I wanted to bring up that point of view.
Did, did Dave do a cost analysis of what it would versus materials and what he would be paying labor for our current employees to do this type of?
I don't know.
To see what, what, what it would be cheaper to do outside, or what it would be cheaper for, to hire a man to do it by the house?
Don't know.
I'm sure that there'd probably be a better, better quality of work for the outside person to do it a little bit better.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're general maintenance people, they're not painters. But certainly if council, if council desires, we can ask the Director of Public Works to, to do that and bring it back.
I think that's a good idea. I think we can, I mean, I'm all in favor of just to prove this money if we have to get like their office painted or something that's going to interfere with the daily operations, but, and have that money in the, in the budget. But if we get needed, he can get his guys painted, like the inside of the bathroom, or the beach bathroom, which his guy did for the last two, three years, they painted inside himself.
They've done something, absolutely.
I first put out the contract, I just, I just look here like doing forty, twenty-foot curb sections of the street. And I think eight hundred dollars is cheap for that. By the time you clean the curb, you know, the grass away from it and paint, it's going to take more, it's going to be more than a thousand dollars. If our people do it, they're doing, all during the summertime, they are busy. They read meters, they do all that. I would say.
It's not summertime yet.
Yeah, but in the spring, fall, it's time. In winter time, they're, they're shoveling stone. Well, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's nice, but I think what we pay them and the work that they do, add them on to paying five hundred, that seems to be an easier thing. But if you start doing the curbs, they've done that before, and that, it takes a lot longer, and you're wasting good man hours. Oh, I'd go with this.
I think what, I think what Sambo is saying is, oh, curbs maybe not, maybe won't be great. But I think what Sambo is saying is, are there things on here that, that we could have the maintenance do, that we could cut this number down a little bit? Now, I don't think we're going to cut it down a lot, because we still have to buy the paint, and there are some things on here we're not going to want the maintenance crew to do. Curbs might be one of them. So I, I don't know that it's unreasonable just to ask Dave, but there are some things that his guys can tell. Right, I mean, I. Joe, please.
I vote that we go with the contract and be done with it.
Right, we have a motion.
I don't like to get into rules and regulations at the federal state and local level to figure out what needs to be done, figure out how to act, worry about temperatures, campaigns this, campaigns that, what you have to do when you're scraping off your area. And that's their profession, I would just go with their profession. It's not the thing we do all the time, we do it occasionally. I think the perfect category for a contract.
Steve?
I'm still a little mystified by how he thinks he's going to save enough money to pay for this, because, boy, I'm reading this, we're not budgeting for this. This is going to be done as funds become available. So he's got a maintenance line item that he has, that is in the budget, that presumably he uses to pay other contracted maintenance. So, and I don't know how he's going to save money on that in order to do this, but I certainly don't, you know, think that he'll just pull the money from any line item that he has. from any line item that he has a couple of dollar savings and to issue a task over on this painting contract. I mean, you know, I think painters should do painting, uh, but I'm just, I'm not happy with the way this has come about.
Well, we, we, you know, we've got a couple of different discussions going on here, and it, it sounds like, to me...
The council's not ready.
Yeah, maybe this needs to be tabled and, uh, and come back, rethink this, define things a little bit better per Steve's request. We can also get an answer.
I'd like, I'd like to hear him explain to me, you know, how he came up with these figures, you know, whether he can save money by, if, if, if this is some way of savings to the department, I don't have a problem with it.
Oh, would be.
But if it's not, then, you know, never store it. But it's gotten to some way, he's come up with the, the amount of money that's gonna be charged here for the particular.
Point.
And I guess there's a bigger point. If, if you, if you're gonna separate painting from maintenance and want to contract that out, should, uh, maybe it begs the question, how much other maintenance could be contracted out versus to have full-time people ready to maintain things that, you know...
We, we, we contract out quite a bit of maintenance, yeah. Grass cutting, for example.
Grass cutting. All right. I think there are two ways we can do this. We can table this, or we can simply have a vote, and it sounds to me like this can be defeated, and then come back with a different motion later on. I, I, I'd say...
You have to vote on the motion that's already on the table.
Right.
So do that, and then you can have a motion to pay. We have a motion, so again, we have a motion on here in a second. So that has to be voted on. We have to add it if you can pick that, and a second motion could come up to table the issue.
Gotcha. I got it. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
In fact, I think we, we may need a roll call vote on this, just to be sure. For tally.
I said aye.
Yeah. No?
No.
No?
No.
Motion is not carried. Now I will have a...
I'll make a motion that we table this to the next meeting after we've met with the Public Works Director.
Your second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion is carried and tabled. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is the Keith Charles Dog Committee Report.
I, um, we formed a committee, three people that day, Sarian, Altean, George Ferguson, and I myself said, and, um, this is, when we first started, the idea, well, the main topic was, did we need a designated dog area? And it quickly, um, went off-topic to not so much that that's the problem as it is irresponsible dog owners in town. Um, so a lot of discussion was made how to improve the condition of our park and our beach with, um, of people not cleaning up after their animals. So we made a few adjustments. Um, the first, we need to change the summer hours that we currently have. Um, there was concern with people not being able to take their dogs to the beach till nine o'clock at night, and then it's dark if, you know, you're walking alone. It became a safety issue, so we tried to change the hours to, um, keep the dogs off the beach when it's the most populated, but still allow some daylight time for people to walk their animals. And that change would require a public hearing, because it is a change to a ordinance. Um, the second, we've kind of implemented already, and that would be to remove the buckets off the doggy stations, because people use them for regular trash cans and not their purpose. So people have their doggy waste in a bag, and they can just drop it in a regular trash, trash can. Um, and that way, it, the doggy, uh, we just have those, they just look really trashy, because they're constantly full of trash. And, uh, something that falls back on staff is to make sure that our doggy stations are, uh, full at all times with dog bags. Um, I think the park's not been a problem, but there's been complaints about the beach, so that's something that we'll be doing on our end. The third, um, suggestion from the committee was that the police department would work with the local citizens to enforce, um, the town's ordinance, and, and we didn't feel that, you know, people needed someone to do anything wrong that way, but just a simple conversation. If, if a person is seen, um, you know, walking their dog and not cleaning up after their dog, or their dog is, um, our leash law leaves a little bit to be desired, because they don't necessarily have to be on a leash, but we have to be within command. So if they could prove that there's a violation of the leash law, to just address it. And, um, the staff discussion, we even came up with a few suggestions. We need to remark on the Gazette, um, asking the elevators to clean up, and we can certainly to identify them of how it can damage the environment. And also, um, as, as staff are trying to also address it, we see people out being irresponsible dog owners. But we will also, you know, just simply if you're walking your dog and you see somebody not cleaning up, hey, I have an extra bag. Obviously, you don't have one. You know, it could be as simple as that, and, um, the town. Also, we have plenty of doggy bags. Um, owners needed them. We're happy to give them to the owners. That's what we have before, so. Any questions for what we were discussing here?
Questions or discussion?
They did not feel that we needed a dog area at this time. We just needed to be responsible with their dogs' work. And there was a lot of discussion about this town quickly, um, we're growing, and, and we wanna be a dog-friendly environment, because people will take their dogs when they travel.
It's the new rage of civility in America today. I, is there gonna be an insurance guarantee if you say you didn't pick up your dogs?
Is that right? I'm sorry.
If you tell someone, please pick up your dog, uh, these days, and they are putting you in the face, I mean, is it covered by insurance?
That is definitely a position.
That's more violent than body care.
You know, I, I think, I, I, I had a situation I had to deal with yesterday where there's this, um, some animal waste, and, you know, I was terrified to call, because I just, I, I'm always scared people are gonna hate me or be mad at me if I address them. And she was so understanding. She said, somebody right up, leave it up. But I think that's just a matter of what a lot of this is. It's just a whole point of help to people and...
There have been, our house is one block off the beach, and there have been plenty of occasions when we've seen people on the beach during the, the hours when they should not be there with their dogs. And it's not that, I mean, we all like dogs. I mean, at least I like dogs. And it depends on the size of the dog. It depends on the other people that are around here. It depends on whether you clean up or not, or the kids on the beach. The net of, so, so I think we're gonna have to do something about this.
We do.
The net of what you're saying is that this is, this is some, we have to find a way to enforce it. This is a start.
Maybe this is a start, just, um, and it, and it falls on all of us. You know, we see the police, but it falls on all of us, offices, staff and citizens. Um, you know, you can't complain unless you're, to me, making up or trying to change it as well. And, and people wanna, you know, well, I see this person...
I don't think it's just staff's complaint. I think it's people that would be complaining. You know, I mean, it's a, it's a...
Oh, yes.
An admirable task to take on, to think the staff is gonna educate the town out of it.
Well, maybe you should do that through the Gazette, you know, with articles, and, you know, it's just, it's just the beginning, I think.
One of the issues you're gonna have if you change the time to an earlier time during the summer is that change of time. There's a lot of people on the beach until almost dark. You know, it gets dark at nine o'clock.
I'm not at all in favor of changing the hours on the beach.
Yeah, I'm not either. I'm not even saying that for now. Time-wise, you know, I don't care much about that. Time is too much, it's a too much of a enforcement issue.
Yeah. I was gonna say, if you change the time, you gotta change all signs. The time on the signs on the beach, so that would have to change. Plus, I mean, we're all, we'll do what we can, but we don't see it happen. We can't force it. So if you watch... Yeah. Jen watches Smithy's dog each month, and I don't see it. I can't write Smithy a ticket. Jen can go do that herself. So that's...
It's just the way it's written, because it's a misdemeanor.
And that is our biggest challenge. We're getting these complaints, but how do we deal with them? Because nobody wants to be the one to say, well, it was yarned, lured, you know, tased, or, or whatever. You know, they, they just want to complain. Without some, you know, a motivation, it's hard for us to...
Why don't they change the time?
They didn't feel that it was necessarily, um, that they needed to be, just they certainly didn't need area where they could, they could rail an area. So we thought we'd make it out more time, a little bit, and then we stand there.
No. Third recommendation, you know, the conversation between violators and a police officer. I guess I'm curious. Uh, in your, in your police report, you have foot patrol hours, uh, sixty-five. Do you have any estimate of how many of the sixty-five are in the park? I know it's a cold weather year, but do you, do you have a set amount of park patrolling that you try to build in to your monthly schedules as we...
As warm weather comes up?
Yeah, I mean, we're in there in the summer. I mean, we're where the people are. I mean, right now, mostly Mason Avenue or beachfront. Going in, talking to people, that's where we're at, foot hours. Park gets busy in the summer. We're in there in the summer.
Most of there.
I mean, you got one person on duty. You can tell me to, I guess, but I don't plan on sticking my man in the park for six hours of a ten-hour shift to make sure a dog doesn't use the bathroom.
No, nor would, I think that would be wise, but maybe a half hour or...
Well, I mean, we're, we're in there in the, we're in the summer, and we're non-stop driving around in the summer. And as of right now, we're doing the same.
Well, this is something I think that's gonna become increasingly an issue. We're gonna be getting more and more people on the beach. We're gonna be getting visitors. Some will bring their dogs. At some point, we're gonna have to do something. Jen's proposed a way to start. Not clear whether that will get us there, but, but we have to begin thinking along these lines, and, and I think we're all open to ideas here as to, as to exactly how this needs to be done. I get Jim's point about, about the use of officers. At the end of the day, it isn't, I think it's gonna come down to how do we enforce this?
It is. It's, it's, it's a very difficult issue. I mean, and, and more than likely, if, if, you know, Jenny has walked along patrolling, and someone's walking their dog, that's not gonna be the time to make changes to it anymore.
Well, the other issue about the dog is that most lo- most of the local residents and the, and the people that are here either that have, some of them's here, are aware of the dog orders. They're aware of, they know about it. They know their dog's not supposed to be on the beach. It's the ones that come from the campground. I cherish them. They bring their dogs in their campers, and they come on the beach with their dogs, and... That, well, he can tell you. I mean, if I'm complaining after complaining, after complaining, you go down there, you address the complaint. Ninety-five percent are gonna say, I'm sorry, I didn't know it. They take their dog, and they go back to their campsite or put, put the dog back in the camp or pick up or whatever, you know, so...
And, and that's it. It's just a simple police, remember your dog and, and those. And then I think we already did that somewhere.
You got four, five hundred people on the beach, and you got five of them have dogs, and, you know, you go get the complaint with the five dogs. And some of them, I, I went out there complaining on dogs, and you couldn't even find the dog. It was underneath, underneath the seat. He wasn't right there. It was a hole or something, but he was a dog.
I have another observation here, playing somewhat doubles advocate. On item two, buckets would be removed from all doggy stations throughout town, and pet owners would be encouraged to use regular trash. Staff would ensure the baggies. If you're gonna, if you're gonna go to that same pole, it'd be more vigilant about the baggies being in there. At the same stroke, you couldn't be vigilant that it's...
They're not using it for the purposes, so, they're not using it for the dog waste. They're using it for regular trash. And so they're not very big, um, receptibles and trying to keep up with the inkling of them. It's very difficult. And, and it makes sense, too. If you're walking your dog, you're gonna take your bag from that station, and you're gonna continue on. You're not gonna be there following that station anymore.
No, I understand. Just so you know, it's...
Unless you go by another station before you go by a regular trash. How many stations, you got, how many stations?
There are roughly four of the beachfront, and there are probably...
Two, two more in the park.
Four, five in the park.
Four or five in the park, something like that. The, uh, the regular trash receptibles are very close to all the doggy stations. Um, and, you know, the real issue is that people walk by and...
Like have one bag and you're the rest of regular garbage?
Yeah, they just fill it up with regular garbage, because they're too easy to...
And then there's no room for the other bags.
Exactly. And it's just an obstacle. It's just...
They're very, they're very small trash receptibles, so...
Very narrow. Where is it?
Is everybody happy with the new time for the ten a.m. times?
No.
No.
I'm not happy at all.
Well, this shows us something for action, but I don't know that we necessarily have actions to be doing here. The, uh, the only thing would be if we decided to change the time, which sounds like council's not interested in doing. We'd have to have a public hearing and change the ordinance. I'm thinking, let us go on with Jen's proposals as they are and see how things go, but I, I really think we're gonna have to do more. We're gonna have to find a way to do more.
Well, maybe as a start, I'd go back to the committee, and we just get some, some public awareness along with the ordinance act, we, you know, maybe that's where we'll start, and then, again, if this...
So, so Jen has a little bit more to bring back, um, to the committee. We heard the commentary about, about changing the time. What about, uh, the duration? To me, it first seems a little bit early or...
I don't think, I don't think we need to ha- we need to have to change that time. It's not that big a difference.
Yeah, no, not the time.
I mean, the duration, you know, the, when it starts and when it ends.
Yeah, April.
I don't think we need to change that either.
Well, either change would require an ordinance.
Yes, it would. I don't think it's worth it.
Yes, it would.
I, I, I think that the April time could be moved back to May. I mean, to give an extra, I mean, to get, you know, wait.
Well, it gives dog owners more leeway to exercise and dog on the beach before there are really people using the beach. And I don't see a lot of people there.
That's what, that's what we originally put the time in there for, for dog owners to have that two months or a month where it wasn't that so bad. They can take their dog on the beach without having to throw up a complaint. That's why we did it then.
And as you can see, another suggestion that was made, if we did make any changes or we did have to change signage, maybe put little signs on the doggy stations instead of on the big sign, because that's where people are hopefully going to get their doggy bags.
Will work. You can have the big sign, and they all, and they all see it.
Well, the, the...
And they don't see the big sign.
Right. Well, the, um, the conversation about that was there's so many rules and regulations that they're not gonna scan from. If there was just one pertaining to the dogs one, that maybe, maybe they could read it. That was the thought.
Getting information out of this big, still, or do you get people on the...
And an approach we hasn't, we have not taken is the, um, the effects it has on our environment. It gets in our soil, and some people think it's good for the soil. It's not. I don't want to go there. It's a question of zero.
I think where we are is we need, we're, we're gonna start with what Jen suggested, but I think we need more, I think we, we need to figure out other things to be doing, and I'm not sure what those are at the moment, but we'll, we'll have to work on that.
So, I just to be clear, are you saying I disagree with what Jen is suggesting? And, or are we able to think?
I see that requires me any council action.
No.
No, no, no.
I, I, I said, I don't believe...
I just want to be clear what it is for agreeing that Jen can do.
Yes.
That's it.
No, the first one can't be done without a hearing and a board of commissioners.
I get that. I get that. That's why I'm saying...
Two and three.
She is gonna pursue, we want her to pursue two and three, and, and will take under consideration at some future date, item one, if it needs to come back up again.
Correct. And other items that she may come to us with, but I don't think we need to go through that.
And is three more, um, public awareness, or is that, I don't know if everybody was in the way of not, if this necessarily be a...
Well...
Shoot, I love this time.
They eat the dog to the...
I don't have any problem with dogs.
NPR had something on, they had, they had video, they had cameras in the parks, and they were taking the videos, and they're going to do a DNA on the dog.
Colorado, it is such a big deal in Colorado. They're testing and tested bacteria and finding you. And then somewhere else, a fine is five hundred dollars. I can't believe it. Talk about expense, having to test all this stuff. Can't believe the fine would be worth it.
It's all not bad.
As, as part of the public awareness thing, it, it wouldn't cost a whole lot to get a few signs made up right at the... signs made up right at the entrance to the beach, you put them, you know, at each entrance, here are the hours for the dogs. It's a very minor expense.
It's on there now, right?
It's on the big sign.
The big sign.
And, but the big, the big sign, the big signs are going to have to be reworked shortly, they get pretty ragged, they're going to do a few, more than a few storms. So they're going to have to be reworked and...
Maybe some violation. Some violation possibly.
So we want to come up with a, with a, down the road, not here, a resolution for all the signs at the beach. So include dogs, beach safety, or...
Right, we get the beach safety issue and all that, you know?
I think the public awareness should be good to go every house and building flyer, and our public works people, when they are not painting, could do that.
We, if we did want to do some sort of flyer, we do have some community service people that we could, we could do that, but...
Okay.
It's an option.
Or we could contract that, somebody to go around and have a, that's, that's free at bay.
I will find free later on, but...
Jen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is twenty-seventh annual Clean the Bay Day, municipal partnership agreement.
Yeah, we, last year, we kind of got involved with the Clean the Bay Day, we did it on our own, and David's disposal, the sponsor of dumpster, and brought in, bombers coming in and dog trash in from prior parts to be disposed of. This year, we reached out to Bay Foundation to find out how we've become a bigger part of theirs, and so they sent us a list, we need a municipal partnership agreement that you guys have to approve. Whether we have David's disposal, has been a great team, very large dumpster, the city of Harvard, they're all the way. And in this timeline, we're asking to improve the agreement, the partnership agreement with the Bay Foundation, as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
Jenny.
She doesn't.
Oh, no.
She's the one that's being nominated to do this.
It's fine, we can work together. Of course, get rid of it, and I'm busy season, so I'll take the lead, so we can get the larger stuff and more coffee. Of course, you've done everything, so it's easy.
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. And then, let's see, let's have constellants, which is to start. Anyone? Joey, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Chris? Steve? Nope. Nothing.
Oh, I can't let it go that easily.
I know you can't.
No, I think it's a, I'd like to comment on the announcement of hiring a town manager, that's always a big, big step in a small town, and somebody to run the day-to-day operations, and I'm very, very excited to have Mr. Rock, Daniel, come aboard, and understand he resided in the town of Cape Charles, which I think is wonderful. And that, that when we came out of our executive session to discuss all candidates, he was a unanimous decision. So, something that has always happened up here, so I think that I encourage that the council did with the mayor's early comments, but I think we just, we selected the best candidate, and we're all were in agreement, and very anxious in welcoming him aboard.
I have no other comments, I certainly echo what Frank has said, looking forward to this, and it's been a while since we've had a full-time, well, hired a town manager instead of acting. Bobby's done a great job. Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
I know. Don't, don't go pat it, too bad, you've got a couple more weeks here for it. Thanks for turning back.
So, let's get it.
Thanks, Frank.
So, there are just a few announcements. March twenty-sixth, the Town Council Budget Work Session will be in at three P M. April second, there is also a Town Council Budget Work Session at six. April night, there is another Town Council Budget Work Session, and April sixteen, and that's at three. And April sixteenth, there will be a Town Council Regular Meeting at six P M.
And after that, the joint meeting with the county officials on eighteen seventy.
Thank you. All right, I will have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Your turn. All in motion.